This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board.
Session here, complete our superintendent evaluation process in a closed session. So the part of this part of the meeting is a work session for us to do our self-evaluation as a board. This is part of our commitment, governance and our governing commitment. We're going to do it in two phases tonight. One, with superintendent evaluation in January, and now we're starting on basically our first full calendar year of coherent governance with monitoring reports. That's a little bit of discussion that would be a good time to look at our cover sheets and talk about our process for, how do we get make sure that when we get around to superintendent evaluation in 2023 in January, we have ample information to make sure that we've captured both the successes of the district as we see them, as we look through the monitoring reports, but also the areas of board concern or areas where the district is not compliant, that we want to make sure that we highlight as a reflection going forward. Since the board considers the performance of the district and the performance of the superintendent exactly the same, we're obviously evaluating all the time, get to the end of the year to build that summary. We want to make sure we have ample information. So I had asked, and I hope that you got a chance to look at both the text, especially in the art of governing comparatively, but also we have three books by Linda Dawson and Randy Quinn, Rob from. And also, when we had talked about in the first place, I had thought, oh geez, what if, what if, what I remembered when I started doing was really far away from what other districts do with their monitoring. So I went back and looked at and offered, you hopefully had an opportunity to look at some of the monitoring reports from Sun Prairie and DeForest, of which we have a full year stored in our shared document from the development policies, but also some from Chippewa Falls to see what they're doing on those reports. My summary look at it was that what we have is actually a lot more than what they are. So maybe what I need, what I would need to do, or what we would need to do is be more concise and specific. But I wanted to, we wanted to take this time to be able to talk about what do we want to get on those cover sheets? And how do we want to present that? One question that I have just in general for going forward is related to OE 11, which we did not vote on last time, which is still outstanding that we need to vote on at some point, but we'll get to that probably closer to the end of our time. We have budgeted up until about eight o'clock before I'll turn it over to Lori to do our more formal self-evaluation of the DSR and GC policies. So at this point, I think I just want to open it up to some discussion. Maybe Mark Paul, I'll start with you because it's been an area where you said, I think, you know, that you'd like to make sure that we have ample information in that summary. I think both, again, it's the successes of the district highlighted, but also the, you know, areas that the board is concerned with and want to prioritize for the upcoming year after each monitoring report. So maybe if you would start by just, you know, talking about what would you like to see when we get, the monitoring reports themselves are one thing, we're evaluating the district at that point. But when we get to the end of the year so that we can be efficient and effective with superintendent monitoring, it's those cover sheets that we're talking about tonight. So what would you like to see on those? And then we'll just kind of go wide open conversation from there.
Yeah. Erica, can you, can you hear this? Is that good or? Okay, yep. So, you know, I think for me, as we continue to move through, through this, this process and adopt this model, is trying to be as, you know, I think, true to the model, you know, as possible. So one of the concerns that I had expressed and one that, you know, hopefully we will move through is that in the summation of, of the evaluation of the superintendent, as we're going through these particular monitoring points is to ensure that notes and the summative piece that is included in the cover sheet captures not only things that we agree on as a group, but also those pointed concerns that still deserve some level of attention and/or items that we feel are missing and are omitted. Because I think collectively, if we are to be very detailed in that particular information when it comes to compiling the information needed in, in justifying the evaluation, that it's there and then actually to be done in a timely manner. But I also think that it would also be indicative for the superintendent and his or her, his leadership group to know that, what are, what are those next steps? And potentially really focusing in or honing in on the desires of the board. And, you know, I think that's kind of where I'm at in my desire to get there. Because, you know, I think the Glenn Dawson and those coherence governance model at its, in its very essence, that speaks to this level, this level of efficiency, but it also speaks to its level of accountability. And, and for me, I think it's that second, that's, it's that second part where the accountability is seen not only from an administrative standpoint, but the accountability is also seen from a community standpoint. And the community also seeing where potentially those, those checks and balances are that may not probably be apparent as of right now. So I think that's kind of where I, I would like to see kind of where we go moving forward as those, those monitoring ports and, and cover sheets of really kind of how we guide that accountability and evaluation.
For the rest of you, what is that? I think that, well, it's speaking for sort of the feeling that I've gotten from our board discussion. We all want to have robust information to make sure that we're doing our job as a board to keep the superintendent and the district accountable to the vision that the board has set, whether that's keeping student results or compliance to the operational. And Dawson talked about spending a lot of time after you get going on operational expectations, something is really, yes, though my hope for the future is that the operations come into compliance and we can sort of dispose of those more quickly, some of the, anyway. But what, what does that look like when we get it onto the monitoring reports? What does that look like? We had a chance to look at some of them, you know, DeForest and Sun Prairies are very brief, maybe one or two sentences. I did not look at every single one of them. So I'll give you, I'll give it, I'll give it that. But one of the ones I looked at were, you know, there was somewhere there was on Sun Prairies where there was no comments at all. It was just the recording of the vote, which to me, that seems ideal. It's like, yep, you're in compliance and everything's good. We don't have to say anything. But what is, when, when we envision it for ours, like what things should be on the summary statement? On that cover letter for the monitoring? What do we, what do you see being on it?
Thank you. Anytime there's partial compliance or some exceptions, then there should be some commentary about what the board considers either of or towards. And I think in reflection of what we experienced this year so far, I'm not sure we would always know what that is, but I think that that's what I expect. What do we need to see? Some cases we've also, you want to see this data next year? Or we want us to see, for example, we want us to see.
Kind of more summative analysis rather than just, rather than just providing data and trying to swim through that. But hopefully those kind of comments would fall away more or less as we find some stride in terms of how we want to see those various pieces of evidence presented.
There's some way she, are there two summary sheets? Is there a summary sheet that's provided by the superintendent? Summary sheet that is optional?
There are two summary statements. They're all in that same cover sheet. That would be what the board has provided, you know, we could always go back and dig out the full monitor. The idea is that monitoring report won't need to be brought back out at superintendent evaluation time because the board evaluated that monitor originally. So we don't have to evaluate it again. And all we're, what we're taking from the summary sheet then is just how do we translate that over? We reiterate, this is the performance of the superintendent. You evaluate a monitoring report in the meeting. That's our evaluation of the taxes. That's our evaluation of the district's condition. At that time, we're evaluating the district. But in the end, because we view the district, the performance of the superintendent to be exactly the same, when it comes to super evaluation time, that transfers over to, this is also your. And so, but we don't need to dig back into every monitoring report. Should have already done our job at monitoring. But for example, Monday we have 10. We've done our job there, shouldn't need to dig back in, just have the summary statement. So it will have, still have superintendent summary statement and then board. Board summary statement, if you look at districts, they can be very short. Or agrees, data was good, or other cases it has highlighting, this is an issue that brought up where the board appreciate, like is glad that we made progress. But it's two statements. Okay. Josh, I think you bring up a good point about sometimes we don't always know what are the things that need specifics. And I think I've seen us as a board over the last few months in the reports getting more, increase our ability to say this is an item, a line item that I'm specifically concerned about or interested in, happy to see that this was the case. I think that's part of our development as a board, the development, making up with, making sure that those things get stated during the monitor. So one way, you know, it's not going to make it onto the summary statement if we don't say it.
Right.
But there's kind of two elements. It's what makes it, what do we want to see on the summary statement? Do we need, do we need in some ways less description than has been in there? And or just like an outright bullet list? Or do we need more description? And that's, but I think part of it relies on us as a board making sure that, that if there are specific issues, both of the district and then therefore of the superintendent's performance, that those are brought up. We have to be able to say them, elucidate them as pointedly in terms of is it how specific? Is it just, we need more compliance? Like we have a lot of exceptions here, it's year one, we got to put it much better. Or is it, I'm specifically concerned about the climate and culture of the organization, what we're dealing with OE six, and these are issues that I, I noticed in the report that even the superintendent, you said, you know, you're not compliant. Well, this is something that we really need to get fixed.
I, I missed your meaning at that level of, that the level of detail of all the ten and all climate artifacts that are visioning and are fully provided is. So I guess for me, so one is those, so an example for me is as we move through this collective reports and artifacts, for me, the, you know, I don't, if I, if a school board member and our collectively, we, we said, we really need to focus on those growth elements as it relates to math for that, that group that fall fell in that lower tier. And then if, you know, Superintendent Johnson and his team did not actually bring that back, then regardless if, you know, Superintendent Johnson perceived that being compliance, that actually was, that's not in compliance because they didn't focus on that particular area. So that would require detail. You know, I, I, I think in, you know, in that example that you use in OE six, if we, I would, I would hope that if we can't pin down specifics that, that what, what does artifacts about climate look like? Then it would be Superintendent Johnson, maybe, or it's the idea that what you brought to us as representative artifacts of climate, that does not actually get at what we're doing. So then that would mean that we, instead of receiving the same type of artifacts that were presented before, we need a different iteration.
So what I'm hearing is that there's, there's at least three categories of things that need to be categorized in our summary. One, ways that the district has succeeded. So for example, if they were, if we're looking at student growth and they were hitting that, and especially they were hitting that, that board bottom that we all want to be hitting, that's that little, that usually have been experiencing low growth, that's a success. Areas where we're concerned, whether it's a more general concern like we need better compliance or a specific concern where we need our budget developed, we need like two or like one to two years of budget is not sufficient. We need three to five. And then the third category is if the board is, is not getting in the report, what it needs to do is a job. So we need to make sure, so there's, we have to, so what I'm hearing you say is we need to have at least those three categories of things on the report, you know, positives, areas of concern, items needed for further monitoring or something. You know, and where, and the level of specificity you're like, maybe, like, maybe you brought up like, I want to see this specific. Or, or then we'll have to take it a little bit more specific, like that detail needs to be there. So we make sure that we get the rights. That hopefully will work in the moment. I know, like you take a lot of notes, they're in the, the thing I know the executive staff is too. But then when we get to the end of the year, we're not. Erica, can you hear me all right when I'm talking?
Um, yeah, it's a real hit or miss.
Okay.
I can hear a little bit and then you cut out, and then I hear a little bit more, and then you cut out. And I'm sorry, you guys, it's really, I'm piecing it together. Please don't make exceptions. My part. I can't hear you.
Because, because you're not wearing a mask, unfortunately, your facial expressions actually give it away. I'm actually really, they're not actually deciphering. Cause you're protecting every other, that's all right, you're going to cover your face, you're your own house. But I'm just saying, realize that you're not wearing masks, your facial expressions are actually giving it away. So you, you're really not deciphering. But hopefully, I think minimizing your facial expression will probably have some better standing here. So.
All right, Erica, I, who posted to the microphone? And I think I'm speaking about the same volume, does that any matter?
Yes.
We're having a fun leg at another time, charter communication about. All right, so we definitely want to, are there, that's a good little, are there other categories of things that we feel as a? So obviously in the moment, the superintendent and the staff is hearing that report and that report is hopefully, you know, those, those requests are being noted. And I think, Mike, you and the staff have done a good job of responding to those things. You know, you know, when there are things for, for next year, we need that, obviously we have not seen that yet. But when they're initial things, I think in general, you've done a reasonable job. Sometimes we have to follow up with an additional question. But, but when, when we get to the end of the year, right? We're still going to be operating off of the report and we'll need to make sure that we highlight it again. If we didn't have the right things or we realized, you know, now we need to start looking at, we've been looking a lot at math over the last year. Now we actually, now we need to focus on, so make sure we get the same kind of report, but for social studies or, you know, foreign language, whatever. We want to highlight that at the end of the year. Are there other categories that you can think of that we want to include on the summary beyond just successes, challenges, and what the board needs in order to monitor effectively?
I think those are the right categories. I'm, what's going through my mind is trying to get my arms around the process of development of that summary. And maybe that's found a different.
But you were talking about things. So we created the report, what contains the board, took a look at it. I, I do feel like we're years out to understand the longitude and latitude of the politics of the district. So that was said in the board meeting, he had some comments, and then that's recorded in the summary sheet that comes back as superintendent summary of compliance or not of compliance, a board notation of board comments?
Yeah, so the superintendent summary is included in, in the monitoring report in the first place because Mike has already completed that. So that's already in there. My impression from looking at the other districts is that they're definitely being done after the fact, that those summaries are after the fact. Now, this last one, we didn't do it because we said, let's hold it and see what we want to do. As I've thought about it, I think it is the right timing to do it after the fact.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to get into the point where a board or even this board or any board is really saying like, no, I won't vote for that because I don't agree with the summary statement. Since what we're not judging is the summary, are like, we're judging or evaluating the progress of the district. So I do think that the appropriate time to do that is after the vote has been taken. The president or, you know, we could assign it to another officer, writes the summary statement. In the past, it's been made and now it'll be Terry who, you know, notes down the actual vote count. And that's the summary statement, then the president signs it, the superintendent signs it, that goes into record. The question is then, like, how do we get from, I think, if those are the right categories? Certainly it's open for the rest of you to add in. How do we make sure that we get effectively from the discussion as we're having it to the president or whoever's writing it gets the right, makes sure that everything is included? That's important for the board on that summary page? If that's what I'm understanding is kind of where we are, what we're thinking about going forward? So.
Full side, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. So I have some thoughts on it to share, but you know, that's probably because I'm the one who's been doing it. So one thought that I had, in order to make sure that nothing, I don't think it's fair to ask the board secretary to provide, and just kind of cut and paste the board secretary's write-up into thing. One, because it shouldn't be their job, like they're keeping the minutes and the notes, but I don't think it's incumbent on them to provide that. And I think there's probably some issues about, you know, what notes become public as a public document and available. So I think that it should be the responsibility of either the president or another member that we designated to. Fine, you know, as the current president, I'm fine with it remaining the president, but that's a discussion we can have. One, one thing that I thought about though is what, if I, what I could do is, you know, certainly if I had questions, I could ask Terry, what do we do? The two things, one, Lori, I really liked what you did at our last meeting where you said, this is a statement that I want to make sure it gets into a monitoring. If we developed collectively sort of board language for what I'm saying, this is an important thing that I want basically highlighted for the monitoring report. Sometimes I know I, as I'm doing right now, sort of ramble on or I'm almost trying to find what's the crux of what I'm saying while I'm saying it. But maybe if I could say, okay, so what I really want to have as a highlight for the monitoring report is this item. I'm concerned about X, or I'm really excited that, you know, even though we've had a struggle and we can see the downward trend of Wisconsin and our, that when you really compare us to our peers, we're among the top. And so, yes, we need to reverse these trends, but we have to keep it overall, you know, whatever it is. So if we develop that language, that will help to highlight. And then what I can do is I can, even if I'm not writing it down because I'm trying to stay engaged or facilitate, I can go back to Terry, I can say, Terry, the things that board members said specifically, you know, are key phrases, can you send me that list so I can include that on the thing? That's one thought I had. Phase two of that might be prior to my signing the final statement, I could send out that, like, here's my summary as I've written it. Are you satisfied that I've captured the things that need to be on? You know, respond by, if I send it out on a Tuesday, respond by Thursday or whatever, right? And then as long as I hear nothing, then I'll go ahead and sign off on it. It's not a voting item because it's just a summary. I don't think I.
Think about like that comment that I made about, you know, climate and base. I felt comfortable saying that because other people have talked about it. I did represent, so, well, one thing did. Or imagine just individual board members where they, I want this in the summary, but it doesn't really reflect. So if things start to get weird in funny ways, you know, and then at what point, I think it's like, it's just like this process. It's that whoever's writing has to, to write a bunch of things, it's under great surprise. Do or do not like the, you know, I'm getting feel like.
Yeah, so I, I think these are just some thoughts I had to try to use that to make sure that we're satisfied.
Somehow possible to do that rather than making it a multi-step process. And that's a very, it's cumbersome. I wonder if there's a way to do it kind of more, where you, you could really walk away from that feeling of confidence that what you got there does reflect through. And when you, you know.
So what? What is, these are all, so now this really is where I'm trying to spin out the thought as it comes to me. If I like, you're going to get on the spot, I don't know the shape of all these stuff. And part of the idea of the summary is not just to help us be more efficient and effective with our work. Would it be useful if at the end, again, as the, if it's the president that's responsible for writing the summary statement? If I gave a brief, this is, these are the summary points that I, you know, have either noted or have heard tonight. Does that reasonably capture what we've talked about? And then we have an opportunity on the spot to say, well, you kind of forgot about the thing that I brought up or, would that be, would that feel different to it? And is that a good idea? I don't even know if that's a good idea. I just, that's what comes to mind as you say, how can we, I want the opportunity to make sure that we're satisfied with what gets on the cover sheet. But yeah, I don't relish the idea of me or any of you having to go through a lot of hoops.
Another thing that I worry about is we're trying to ensure multiple information to be accurate when we're creating these reports. And if we're creating this whole system for every report, then we're, how much work are we shifting for our annual evaluation onto each and every one of those reports and it's off the ship? And I'm, for a governor's perspective, first of all, I'm also a little concerned about just passing that along to one board member to, to author sign, you know, to, Terry, you've been doing that, but I worry that facing all that authority in one person, you know, they can choose to write what they wish, more or less. And then, you know, what's, what's the process for the board to actually provide oversight over how it was crafted? Without, we don't have a process. I'm not concerned about, I don't think anyone present in terms of what their intentions would be, but that could be a power of use if, if one of the prompt circumstances.
What we're really talking about though is just the fodder, if you will, for the superintendent evaluation. Because really, they're still getting around with the, like, the board accepts that report. The report is, is, the summary is only just trying to help us at the end of the year be able to efficiently, like, quick and efficiently, right? Write the summary letter. Because really, the, the monitoring and the evaluation of the district happens report by report. It doesn't happen, the monitoring of the superintendent does, like, yes, technically happens in January by our policies. But in reality, Mike will never be surprised by the results of that letter because we have said all of those things throughout the year. So I'm not, so I'm not very concerned about, you know. So I'm not, so I'm not very concerned about, you know, shifting it away from the end of the year because that really should just be an added up, throw it in a, on a piece of paper almost because we've already, we've already said it. You know, the district, we already know where the district is and therefore how the superintendent is doing. And for that matter, like, I think eventually the board would catch it, right? I mean, like, you'd, you'd see them at the end of the year and if all of a sudden you look at those and you're like, this is nonsense.
They catch it right in the meeting.
Right, but I mean, I think you're talking about if, if, if I or some other author were to, you know, like, Lori, if you were to bring up, I'm very, very concerned about, you know, the district's performance, like in, like we we cut all of our music programs and arts and we just said, we're no longer doing them. And that's obviously violating our principles. And then I don't write anything about that on the summary page. The monitoring report itself is where, you know, the board, even if superintendent would bring that to us and say, we're, we're making it that we are making reasonable progress towards our goals. Well, the board at that point, if it's doing its job, would should say, I move to amend this report to say not making reasonable progress on these areas. And that is, that is really the law. So there shouldn't be any way for, you know, and yeah, you, I don't like. I guess the question is, when would you see the summary page? But the report itself is in record and filed with the vote regardless of what the, you know, president would write on the summary.
For, for me, I think it's two things. If, if that summary, if the summary points could be be gathered in real time. I excuse yourself a little more, but, but what, what would also land it? Probably one of the things, at least for me, really kind of, I think, can you go back and explore the, in terms of level of efficiency? When we think about the enormity of all these, of all these, and votes. Realize, you know, you know, I think, I think I mentioned this at the hearing conversation, but you also have your, your flexibility in, in a cycle. We have, as, as a board, we have a last going in or certain, we need certain results, results in, in that hall. And that could potentially be that idea of not being, because really the summative, the summative pieces to each of these reports. It's basically saying in the, in, in the Quinn and Dawson book, there is no way we're gonna have, well, I guess there could be. But, you know, if we had a repository for this electronically, it, but this idea that you don't want to be, when it comes to superintendent evaluation, you don't want to be sent a 97-page document for each OE, each result. All you would want is a cover sheet, maybe like two pages. And that context could be bulleted point form and or, and or a small, small paragraph. And you're using that to be just refresher, but also you're using that as what you're employing for, for, for the evaluation. So I, for me, I think it's really how do you capture maybe in real time? That collectively all individuals have contributed to what's going to be there and then summarize that and that's what we, that's what we have. And it, it gets this piece in terms of that, that level of, of it being perceived comes, I mean, if it's, if it's captured in real and what that may be, that being practice, we probably have to scale back the how many of these that we look at during, during a meeting. Like we, you know, and that may, that may be the piece, but it's, it's really just trying to capture maybe in real time the collective, the collective group thought and maybe how we know it's a collective group thought that a, a, a one school board commissioner makes a good point. And, you know, I think kind of how we've been working like lately is we read the room, if there's nodding of, nodding of heads or like, you know, then that's that affirmation that at least it's more than one. So it's not an individ, you know, it's not an individual. And so then.
It would work in reverse too. So Lori, you know, like if you said, this is something that I think is important enough that I, I needed to, I wanted to be on the summary sheet. We had developed, you know, sort of a group, you know, vocabulary around when, you know, then I, we would have to rely on one another. You know, to say, you know, well, I, I actually don't find that to be such a big issue. Or, you know, like, you know, you think that's a good thing, but I'm not satisfied. I don't see that as enough progress. And that, then it, then maybe it, you know, maybe that is what's captured is that, you know, there's disagreement or the board is not, you know, so we'd almost, I think part of it, if we're trying to capture it in real time, which feels a lot better for me looking down, you know, if I'm the one who's continuing to do that. We do have to then develop together as a board, the ability to have that discussion. And I, I've seen it growing lately. I think that's a positive, but it would be something that we're kind of committing to continuing to move forward. And, you know, as new members come on, that's got to be part of the cultural, like, of the, of the board itself and the training that they go through, like, this is how we make sure that we capture those things. So I'm sorry, I kind of interrupted you.
Oh, no.
Our call, but I, I like.
Excellent. I think.
Positives and negatives can also work out.
Yeah, I, I completely, I completely agree if there, if there's, if there's shared concerns, if there, if there's disagreements because that enriches the information that provided on the end in the evaluation that, you know, like you certain members are, you know, certain members, I feel like, you know, you were in compliance, others didn't. And why, you know, I think that the challenge will be in real time, you know, there is, when there is that potential disagreement or when we're wanting to see something else, the challenge is for us to be able to find, find and or identify specifically.
Where, where, where does the potential disagreement, where does the potential disagreement lie or what, what aspects? But I think it, it's capturing, capturing in real time to alleviate or not allow for, for it to be so, be so cumbersome. And, and I think that will be a monitor, that will be the role of the board to within, within a timeframe that we, we have a, the listening piece being presented. We have a, 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 a general questions and our comments. And then we have kind of this, uh, 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 time for, uh, time for kind of what are the, what are those big pieces or what are those pieces? And so how do we capture that in that? I don't know. What's the designated time we've been using?
It's been about a half hour. It depends on like, you know, some of them that's, that are more likely to be, you know, we've had, we had, you know, less discussion on OE 11 because it seems like the district is, you know, fairly compliant on that. We might have more discussion on OE 10 when we know that there's at least, you know, some elements that the board wants to make sure that we're advancing. So, you know, we've been tentatively in agenda setting, setting about a half hour for each monitoring report. As you talk about, you know, we'll have more time. Once we've gotten through a cycle, my vision is to remove the first draft element. Like we might still get the, those sent ahead of us without the actual evidence ahead of time. But because we've already had this opportunity and a chance to comment on what do we need for next year? We probably, we, I, I think we will not need to have the half hour of first draft time, which will then essentially mean we'll just have one monitoring report per meeting, which will, one, make sure that we can always have our focus on results since that's our main focus. And two, we can either fill that time with some board development or another issue that comes up or be able to extend that time out, you know, essentially giving potentially an hour to each monitoring report if we need to. And again, with the OEs, if we're still doing that in a year or two, then we probably have to reconsider what, how we are handling it because we've gone wrong. But we could have some more flexibility in that time. It's this first year where we, we need to make sure that we're getting a first look at the interpretations and at least the first set of proposed indicators to make sure that the board feels that they're reasonable in the first place. But going forward, we should have, I think, some more flexibility on that piece. But we, yeah, we've been, we've been doing about a half hour of general budgeting. I think there was one time with a couple of financial ones that we said 40 minutes for two of them for the first draft and the one because we thought they'd be smaller. For the next one. Yeah, sorry, Erica, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so I just, I guess I have a question for Mike. So, um, I'm thinking about this idea that we would capture different viewpoints in a monitoring report or, or maybe potentially cons, you know, concerns or, or positives or, or something by, by a, by a consent that's perhaps not a voted on consent, right? Where we would put something in the superintendent evaluation that would be not something that we actually put to a vote. And then that could potentially lead to, you know, hey, you're doing a really great job, say, two members of the board. Hey, I think you really need to improve this, says two members of the board. And what does that, you know, I, I, I'm concerned for what that might mean for future monitoring or what might, what that might mean for the superintendent? And would that be confusing and would that potentially? I mean, because our governing commitment is that we will speak, you know, as a single unit and that we will make decisions, you know, as, by a vote. And, and I'm not saying that's to, I don't want to squash any, you know, because we all bring our own strengths and we all bring diversity of opinion. And I do think those have a place to be expressed, but my concern is, will those, could, could monitoring reports become battleground for board potentially disagreement? And how, how Mike would, how, how would that feel, I guess? Or how would that potentially affect your ability to govern the district if the board is giving you like potentially two very different opinions on something?
I feel like, why don't you bring in the answer and then like, you know.
So, so, so once again, Erica, there, there, there actually can't be, there can't be a disagreement on the report because we're voting on the report to accept it or not. So, so there can't be a disagreement on the report. Where, 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 where there will be, I, I, I would say instead of, I know there, we're, we're living in a day and time where like criticism and all that kind of stuff is like just viewed different ways. But what you would say a disagreement, I would actually be just saying varying feedback. I would argue that actually varying feedback is possibly able to be covered in the summative cover sheet of, of, of the book, of the board summary of, of that report. But the report itself will have a vote, will hold that vote. And the vote is the collective group's decision. Whether or not there's someone who will vote no, that I agree or I don't, the collective, whatever the majority says, that's, that's what, that's what's accepted. So that's, that's the voice of the group. Now, where it is moving forward, where that, uh, 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 varying feedback, uh, potentially happens is if I vote no on a report, given the, uh, 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 artifacts and the interpretation of the superintendent on being compliant, compliant with exception, what I would continue to provide feedback on is I would like to see something stated that it was not in agreement in the annual evaluation. That actually this was in compliance, even though it was. So we have that opportunity, but I think when we think about where the disagreement, the disagreement does not actually happen. If I read this, these two awful books, which I'm, 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 I feel sorry for our student rep here, she actually has copies of this book, which for, oh, yeah, but so, so, but, but, but there's not the discrep, the discrepancies do not necessarily happen with the monitoring reports because we vote on those. And it is likely that, you know, it's a five-two vote. The voice of the committee has accepted those monitoring reports and artifacts as the monitoring report. That's it.
And that's the board's decision.
That's.
Whether you're the one who voted no or yes.
It doesn't matter.
Board votes, that is how the board feels and we don't, we don't get to, that's the, that's part of the.
Yeah.
Part of the board decision.
Yeah, so i- 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 if, if, if your comment though is about kind of the, the, the discrepancies on potentially what's missing and or what was articulated in the exception piece that there needed to be, be more added and or what be with, that potentially can be captured in that, in that summary piece. But there, there can, there will not be, if we're, we're following the context of this book, there's, there's not differences in the monitoring report because we vote on them. It's, it's, it's potentially what goes into that, 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 that summary, that summary piece. That's where potentially the capturing of, of differences of ideas. And so if you're asking Mike.
That's what I meant, yes.
Yeah, so if, if, if you're asking Mike, how does he deal with that actually, that school, different school board commissioners have like differences, that's actually out of the purview, actually like.
And he's getting it in real time anyway. He sat through the same discussion, so even if it's on the summary letter at the end, you've probably already acted on it and gotten a feel for it. And there's, there is no direction of the board unless we vote on it. And so, you know, you've taken your notes, you, there's nothing you need to do. And yeah, it's outside of what we're.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's kind of outside of the, right? You know, I, I think, you know, Mike's a nice person. I'm pretty sure the next superintendent would be a nice person. But that's really probably out of the purview of actually controlling the differences and our, and our feedback. Because all, all Mike is obligated to do is actually abide by the monitoring report that we vote, we, we voted on. But how he potentially interprets, interprets navigating the differences of, of perspectives of school board her report, you know, I, you know, I, I think, you know, that's, that, that, that is something, you know, I think Mike, Mike, Mike could, could speak to, but I think, yeah.
And in the BSR, he's expect, he does, he's not expected to take any direction from individual board members. It's expected to only be directed by the board. So we've got 10 minutes left and I, I think we had, there's probably, you know, we might want to have more discussion about this. But I do feel like we've got a little bit of trying to, I have a couple of questions. One of them revolves around when we go into OE 10. How do we want, do we want, I guess, me for now, or whoever the president is, to try to summarize after the vote? After a vote, this is what I, these are the summary points that I have down. Does that feel okay? Is that a way to check in real time? Because I, like, you know, months later, it's going to be hard to remember. And unless you're somebody that, this was very important to you and it didn't get captured, you may not remember that. Or is that like, does that feel like a reasonable step to take to try to capture real time? Is that too much work or like?
It could rotate, could rotate in the same way we do the brief.
Okay, so then that person, like the third member would be in charge of taking the notes and saying, this is, this is, these are the summary points that I got down and then sending those on to the president to put on the summary statement?
I mean, it spreads over.
Sorry?
Well, but that person, whoever it is would be, like, they have to get the endorsement of the group on the spot.
Right.
And it spreads the workload, so.
Okay, uh, so you and I almost never do the debrief because we always just hand it to the.
Well, the vice president should because they don't have a role and, you know, they don't have a role in them.
Okay, so then, so what does that feel like if we move it around so on, I give like, you know, there's six of you, there's what roughly 20-ish? There's 14 plus four, there's 18 monitoring reports. That means three times a year you would be responsible for like summary, summarizing, you know, the points for the meeting, sharing that with the group at the end, the marquardt, that's what I'm like. And then the, the, yeah, we're good. And then you send it off to the president. Would you, well, how, would you rather just be the, like, the, the, the one person do it or the president do it or like, because you, you just.
It, 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 I, I think, I, I think all of, all, all of this is fine, you know, like, say, I, I just have to just work on my own, my own personal issues. Like I said, I, I've still struggled because I'm not like a true believer like in this whole thing like.
That's by your evaluation on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah, so like, so like, yeah, so for me, it's kind of one of those things, but that makes sense though. I think from, 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 from an equitable, equitable standpoint, I, I, I think it's, uh, depending on those of us who've, if you've never endured, uh, 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 taking, uh, meeting minutes, uh, though, it may, it might be, if everyone has.
I think it's going to be smaller. It's really just trying to get some bullet points.
I, I think, I think, I think, I, I think that's good. I, the challenge will be then that we, moving forward, that that's also added, uh, uh, on to the, uh, on, onboarding process.
Sure.
To new, uh, to new school board members as well, kind of, you know, especially depending on what areas new school board members come in from. But that's not probably something that they're, uh, 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 familiar. what areas new school board members come in from, that that's not probably something that they're uh, 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 familiar with exactly.
Yeah, you don't want them to be the first rotation is the new. Okay, so um, for Monday with OE ten, Lori, would you be willing to do that since we have, then, um, maybe in the agenda setting on the eighteenth? Maybe that can be a a minute of conversation, but how do we want to, and then, you know, like, Terry could just add that to the agenda, you know? OE, you know, monitoring report OE seven, and in the information, you know, could say Commissioner Clements will be, you know, note, taking the notes for the summer, but then you could model that at after, presuming that we, you know, vote on OE ten one way or the other, then you could share after that. That sound reasonable to everybody? Yeah, go ahead, Erica. Sorry, I, when I moved closer to the microphone, it turned me away from you on the screen. I apologize.
That's all right, I'm patient. Um, the, the thing I'm wondering is maybe what we could, if it's feasible or possible to create some sort of, you know, form that we could easily, that each board member could easily just kind of fill in with these categories that we've sort of delineated, that we want to capture, and that way it's uniform and everyone's kind of following the same, you know, style, and um, maybe there's even a sample created. I don't know, Lori, if you're really good at it, we could just use yours as a sample moving forward. But um, you know, somehow or another, that way, I mean, not only is, would it be great for training purposes, um, but I think it would just help us all just make sure that we get the things in there that that are really important and not, you know, and I, the last thing I want to see is all, you know, someone who is struggling in a meeting, say, oh, should I put that in the minute? You know, and then it just gets really awkward in a board meeting. So it might some, it might take, I think it would be better to do a little bit more organization upfront of that, of that um, system so that it makes it as easy as possible for board members, especially new ones that come in.
Erica, that's a good idea, and let's add that to like our discussion point for the agenda setting, when we really dig into a little bit more of that form. But I I think that's a good idea. Thanks. Um, so we can do that process for OE ten. My last little bit here is talk about OE eleven, which we discussed at the last meeting but did not hold a vote on.
Say one thing.
Of course.
This is kind of like at the eleventh hour thing, but Josh said something. And it's your idea about what happens if you get a monitoring report in March. And then the evaluation is, how do you account for that? How do you, how do you account for that?
So I I think one thing that's important is to note that, like, even Quinn and Dawson, say, or Dawson and Quinn, because it's out of one of her sheets to leave. Um, that the moni- the superintendent evaluation has to be conclusions, should be conclusions drawn from the information that's in the monitor. It doesn't mean that you can't recognize that this was a monitoring report that happened a year ago, and we already know that there has been progress toward it, but we are still obligated to note. So for example, our, we'll have OE ten, and, you know, Bill has already said, I I'm going to have some issues and I need to have more, like, further report. It's not compliant. Well, presumably, you know, it's going to be coming up to January. We're going to have OE ten again, basically the meeting after we do the superintendent evaluation next year. With that on there, we don't have to say, well, nothing has happened. We can say, it is important to note that the board had real concerns about, if this is something that ends up on the summer, whatever, but the board had real concerns about this. However, it, you know, this being near the next monitoring report, we know there has been progress and we anticipate better success in the next monitoring cycle. So we can acknowledge that growth, you know, if there have been changes, I think, without violating the, you know, it's on the monitoring.
Right, I think that's an ideal, and my concern is more of like just human, you know? And board members, we just, we're forgetting, you know, like, who's tracking when it's not on the report?
Well.
I don't know.
And in the worst case scenario, we really are saying, this is, this is the progress. Like, if you were not compliant, regardless of if it was January or it was a year ago, that's still part of how your evaluation is for this year. Um, you know, and so we're, I guess we're looking at it from potentially a negative side, but if we get the things in the thing, we want, we shouldn't have to remember, like, these, this is where we were when it was monitored. And, you know, vagaries of the clock, I think.
Does that prior report summary sheet come forward with the next cycle of review?
Well, at the very least, I think Mark Paul brought it up earlier, like, we need to be looking at, have we changed, you know, how how have we evolved from the previous year to this year? So we won't necessarily get the full, we could, we could always think we're out, but certainly one metric of the district progressing you have fewer with exceptions this year than you did last year. And or on the specific topics, I was very concerned about growth in math for this quadrant. Did you grow there? Like, you know, we are going to be definitely comparing year by year. Sorry, Josh, I think you were about to say something.
Yeah, I mean, and we see very big things to happen in a year, which totally changes, uh, would totally change everything. And it could be with the district or it could be the superintendent, like, that something happens and all of a sudden changes our perspective on what, on what performance is, even if it's very bad or otherwise. Um, and I would hate to to get to the end of the year when we're doing an evaluation. And something that we evaluated six, seven months ago was, was pretty good. And it turned out, oh, man, there was a train wreck for the last six months. But so, but so it worked, or it was not really good. Things have changed, but if we're only pulling back that, that operating, that OE core. And I feel a little bit pain in the head in terms of the
In a perfect world, the the OEs would be just rubber stamp, this is the end of the year. You know, does it add up to a a pass, pass fail type situation? But um, it it's, that doesn't allow us to be summative, I guess. You know, it just, it's, it's just adding numbers and not, and not looking at how things, how things are going.
Sure.
So.
That's why we can draw those, those things forward in the report when we, like, when we write it, you know? So maybe there's an ideal of that one page just sort of checklist, but maybe we'll always need to have a narrative piece beyond it. The other thing is, if there's something that is critical, right, like you said, like, it was pretty good eight months ago, and all of a sudden, something happened between spring and now in the middle of fall, where, holy cow, the board always has it in their power by majority vote to monitor any policy essentially at any time. Obviously, you need to be sensitive of giving the administration time to do it, but if something is all of a sudden, if something goes completely haywire, the board doesn't have to wait a full year and say, well, we can't check in on this. If we, if the board then gets together and it's in the policy, you know, board members can request agenda items, we have that discussion, do we need to re-monitor this right now because it seems like a crisis? Yes, that, yes, um, I think it seems more necessary to, like, you know, like, yes, we can sell, you know, we could. Anyway, it seems more necessary to me in in events that are going bad, but you're right, either way, the board can say, we have to change the monitoring cycle because we need to have an update on this and re-monitor it right now, or we need to re-monitor it at next date. If we have a monitoring report that we think is so critical or has so many flaws that we need to check back in in six months rather than a full year later, we can make that decision at the moment that we're accepting. You know, we can amend it to say, you know, we accept it and approve it in this fashion. However, we require re-monitoring at X Y date. That's all, all of that is in our purview if we need to make sure that we're not going to lose something critical. We don't. While in the, in the perfect system, we're only having to go through it once a year, we can be proactive with it when we need to, or responsive to when we need to be more nimble. It just takes the action of the board together. Okay, so um, I'm I'm digging into your time now a little, Lori, I just, I would like to talk about OE eleven. So I I did send out at the, at a late date the notes that were, that we had from OE eleven. I think the only real discussion point to me that was kind of on the summary was Mark Paul bringing up and 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 I a little bit about like, how do we include referendum items? So for me, the only summary item is that the board is interested in in years, especially in years when there is a referendum, how that will be reflected in this piece. Um, I didn't hear any real concerns, you know, Mark Paul, I think you had a, maybe what we need to do is look at our version of the policy, do we need to be more explicit? Um, but that's not a, that's not a monitoring, that's, that goes on the list of like potential policy changes for us to consider. So I would probably just write that one, that, you know, the board discussed how referendum, both indicators, pieces of evidence, you know, might be displayed in this report for the future. Um, are there other things that I'm not seeing in this that you remember from the discussion that we think we should be in there? Because what I'm going to say is, can I put that, can I get that ready or, and can I just put it on a consent item? We have a placeholder for it ready in the thing, but can I put it on consent for Monday to to finish OE eleven? That we have this new process we'll be doing for OE ten. So two things, one, is that okay for the summary? That's my attempt at summarizing. And two, can I, you all feel okay if it's on consent for Monday? Uh, so to close up, thank you all, I, for just the insightful conversation, thinking and the, and making this part of our process hopefully better, we can, this is part of the nice thing is that we can adjust this, we can revisit it. So we'll work on this, we'll work this way for a while, we'll see what it's producing, and if we, we need to do better, we can always come back and do it somewhere. Thank you. Uh, Lori, thank you for five minutes of your time, and I'll turn it over to you.
Consideration of the old board self-evaluations, two thousand seventeen and eighteen. And if you had a chance, whatever I thought you should at least acknowledge them. Uh, and I, going back, I appreciated those comments, there was a lot in there. Um, it, um, I did participate in all three evals. Uh, the two thousand seventeen board self-evaluation was one of the very first things I did as a new board member. I can't say that I remember all, all of it, what it all means, but I do remember a lot of it. Um, so were there things that, any of that content that you feel is relevant to what we're doing now that we don't want to forget? And I have a, I have a few things.
This is not a don't forget, but I I noted several, like, discussions of like, we need better governance model. We need to look up to our governance model, and then I look at what our board did and just said, like, we're going to just do a better, like, you know, at least a new governance model. I think it's, maybe you can decide whether or not you think it's good, but I mean, like, I do feel like we have a model now that we are working on and trying to be, so I would, I got a kick out of that, I was like, well, you know, three years of this and we buckled down and and just said, we're going to go and.
I don't know, um, there was a prior model, I don't know if you haven't noticed that comment, but where the board was just challenged so much by the turnover, and nobody was even there when that was, you know, developed. So lots of challenges, but.
For me, like, you know, this is, look at, it's kind of like old place, but for, like, for me and mom. The, the, the one thing, you know, the board development piece, so my, my apologies, Erica, I saw you frowning again. Uh, the, the board, uh, the board, uh, development pieces for me, and they kind of spoke to me, and like I said, especially for being, being the, the member that, you know, you know, still has reservations about the coherent governance model. I think for me, um, the need for, you know, ma- maybe some development, uh, is, uh, is there, you know, I think, uh, even being able to see in real time, a board go, go through the process, you know, when you, you know, I, I forget who I reached out at, you know, uh, at, at, at Chippewa Falls, but it's interesting, they only, they focus on like one, one thing, like for a whole entire, like, active, one or two things for our academic, academic year, they don't go through all of their, all, 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 all their results, so I'm not sure. For me, though, is when you read, when you read the, uh, Dawson and Quinn, Quinn and Dawson books, I think for me, it's in those examples that they provide, where are the clear that they just came up with, or were those examples utilized in an actual district? So, uh, your, your question about the feedback for me was just the, the acknowledgement of where, where, where does development still need to actually take place, uh, in, 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 in this process? And, you know, I, it'd be interesting if, if others feel like they, they need more development, or, uh, if you, if you feel, you, you feel good where we're at, or you just accept the fact that we are a, a work in progress. And, uh, it will take, uh, it will take a while to get there. And I guess my only hesitancy of being comfortable with, like, it, it will take a while, uh, given the, uh, level, you know, historical turnover on a school board, a potential upcoming turnover on a potential school board, uh, uh, we should be able to say at some point in time that your participation in the coherence governance model as delivered by Eau Claire Area School District, you should be up to speed by this particular point. Um, and I, I, one would potentially make an argument, maybe it should be, should be in a year, you should, you would be up. So for me, it's, it just goes back to the development piece that was included in the self-evaluations of acknowledging where, where further development needs to be, you know, I, not only in this coherence governance model, I would make the argument that, to be honest with you, one of the reasons I don't provide a lot of feedback, uh, as it pertains to, uh, as it pertains to the finances. So how does an organization like a school district works, you know, and and, uh, I guess we're supposed to get some of that from uh, these monitoring reports, but I'm not really sure, uh, as in in their current setup, I, you don't, you don't get that. And are how does really, I mean, about, you know, infrastructure and, and, and those pieces? Like, so to give you an example, it still makes no sense to me, but I I I think people who have been in charge of like facilities, the fact that we still, we only like work on half of a roof of a school, like, really, like, like, that just doesn't, I, I can't wrap my brain, but I, I, I understand that it was done in like, like faith, but like, how can you just do like a part of a roofed building? And so like, those are those pieces where, 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 where are, uh, I think Erica, uh, had said it in the previous, like, kind of, where are our blind spots in terms of development, right? That's, so if we could do something about develop, you know, identifying areas of development, I think that was kind of a theme that came out of all three, that at least the board realized that certain development pieces now, you know, the one development about attending Wasby, I'm probably, that's not me, Superintendent Johnson, uh, goes to those, provides us, oh, yeah, and Tim, and they provide us somewhat of a, of a summary. That would not be a professional development, that if the board said, like, it's vital, I'm not sure I would be, I would think that would, would be vital for me versus learning more about coherence governance or some of those other pieces. But I think the acknowledgement of kind of where are those areas of development that seem to be a recurring theme within those evaluations at what we're, we're meeting.
I was sad when Aspen canceled their, like, uh, seminar session, but I do think we need to keep our eyes out for, for more of those, because we do have more budget money to do that. I know the Wisconsin, uh, it's like group, probably spearheaded by Sun Prairie. It's in the, like, sort of like that first year, maybe we had, had some sessions, I, I intended. That was while we were in our. So we need to, and into that, I know, like, when I go to Wasby, I kind of try to connect with the, you know, other members that are in coherent governance and just say, like, hey, we're looking for some relevant things, whether it's in a formal session or, you know, just like, hey, how do, how do you do your board? The other thing that's like a big thing is that Aspen does do their, like, a wisdom sharing every year. Like, that's a big, like, annual, like, uh, last year it was going to be in Alabama, but of course it's virtual. This year it looks like it's planned for Hilton Head, so obviously that's a significant board expense to send members, like, you know, to fly out to South Carolina. But I mean, that would be another, like, direct, I I do, I agree with you that, I think, getting involved in some direct coherent governance development, like, I, I feel pretty comfortable with a lot of it, but I know that I got blind spots and I, and I want more of that development. And just to see, like, how are others doing in it or doing with it, what tweaks have they made? Like, we made OE two and OE three, that's Eau Claire, like, we developed those, those aren't, no. What other tweaks of other districts, how could, you know, what, how could we improve? So I'm with you on the, on the development. So I'm with you on the, on the development, we need to find that, we need to figure out. We need to spend our board development money, I guess, to make sure that we can get that.
Yeah, I, I, I would probably have to take a, as much as that would be interesting to me, I would take a pass of going to Hilton Head. Cause my focus, to be honest, would not actually be on professional development.
I mean, it is disappointing that one of the things that they say is oceanfront golf, tennis.
Yeah, so it's hard to get into a session. Yeah, and actually, it, it, it actually, I like.
That's board self evaluation in progress.
Yeah, yeah, so, but in less desirable places, I'd be, do the setup, but.
I'll try to ask them to do it in Oklahoma.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, definitely, definitely would focus on board sessions there in Oklahoma. But yeah, Hilton Head is just, it's a great, a great area. But yeah, that, that development piece about this model though, I think it really, uh, uh, it really would speak to, because there has to be something out there where I think we're, we're, another thing that we have to do a very good job at is, and, and, and I thought I would see this in the evaluation process and maybe I, I missed it. But really, one of the overall intentions of a school board is to be able to effectively communicate and like share information. And I thought there would be like a little bit more of, you know, how did the board feel? Or what avenue for most, like, so that reflective piece about like, like the communication, like, did we, summarizing actually our effectiveness of actually, uh, describing to the community what we do, are all stakeholders what we do? That was something that I thought I would see a little bit of like summarize the, the aspects of like these surveys. Did we, did we turn them around in time where they, you know, and so those, that, that was a piece, but I'll just go back, I'll just stick to development. But the, the communication thing was something I thought I would see a lot.
I, I don't know, I, I don't want to be too thick about it, but I, I think you don't see a strong communication piece coming forward because there wasn't any. Other.
Just kind of like, yeah, with self evaluation, we're moving on. So was, was there something that came of that?
I don't remember this, again, thinking about working dramatically. I don't remember us going back at like checkpoints and revisiting the self evaluation. Except at the, you know, at the one year mark. So just like we're doing now, look at the past years, but, and, and I, again, I don't hate to be too general about it. But I think that they, they kind of more relied on individual members, you know, sort of remembering certain strengths or areas for change and making sure that those keep getting to the fore. I guess I have two things that are process questions for y'all. One, something that you saw mentioned repeatedly is the board strategic. And I realized that in our new model, I don't know the status of our strategic. I would say that it had, it was starting to really, it's not that those areas of the plan are important, they are, but they're also written so broadly that you could connect anything to that strategic plan, and it was really starting to lose meaning. But I think, I felt like we should, we do have a strategic plan, so I think we need to do something. And whether it's just completely retiring it or revising it, but, but it is sitting there. So that was one process thing. The other process thing these old evaluations reminded me of, and you see it coming forward most explicitly in the one from 2019, where the board set these goals and people were giving feedback. So there were four, you don't, it doesn't matter, you go back and look, but there were four goals in 2019, and people were commenting on progress toward those. And so I wondered what you, I mean, it's different with coherent governance, but I didn't know if that idea of, of identifying certain goals, if that resonated with any, or some variation of that. I, that was an interesting process piece.
I think our goals are more or less plain, right? They're the, they're the BSRs and the GCs. The question is, I think, in this model then is, do we as a whole feel like we are compliant or not compliant with each of those things? And obviously, looking over the, you know, there's a, there are areas where there are differences of opinion in terms of how compliant we are. But I think especially in a time where we would, in our evaluation, come to a sort of consensus, this is an area where we're not living up to. You know, one of those might be, depending on what the exemption, what the. I'm talking about in, in our new model, right? Like on our new model, if I look at it right now, like GC two, I think almost everybody that, like, it looks like we have five responses. And four out of the five of us have put down compliant with exception. Now, we might have different exceptions as we go through, but that might be an area where as a group, we say we're, we're not hitting that goal. And so, and that, that GC, and so that becomes the goal, like we have, you know, we, just like the administration has to be compliant with ROEs, the board effectively has, must be compliant with its commitments and policies. So I think that's how that goal idea comes out here, but it's identifying, because our, our goals are that we're perfectly emulating, exemplifying these policies.
Um, sorry, can I talk, Josh? I just think that's, I think that's right, like that our goals should be based on areas of, you know, non-compliance or compliance with exceptions. But I'm wondering if there's some way to perhaps utilize that structure, you know, the structure that we have for self-monitoring, but then maybe to articulate some themes on that, you know, there might be themes in there, areas that kind of overlap with one another, where perhaps it touches multiple, um, you know, governance policies or board superintendent relation policies, but there might be some way to boil it down a little bit more, but I agree on the whole, Tim.
Would we consider evaluating our various elements throughout the year, similar to how the administration is asked to do, where rather than having this, this check in once a year, which I think is valuable, would it be useful that after this time, we, we say, hey, there's four or six or how many of these where we feel like we want to, we want to do some self-evaluation. And so if it's, I don't know if it's quarterly, if it's every other month or something like that, where, where we can give ourselves some work. Is that, is that even realistic or? I feel like the, the role that we play to provide governance direction for the district requires that we have these kind of conversations more than two hours a year. And so how, how can we do that in a way that we're making sure that it's meaningful and? And yet, is that, is that something that's appropriate to do at a board meeting where there's other business, you know?
Or they say that you can, different boards do different things, once a year, semi-annually, more quarterly, where you even might, you know, chunk out the, the policies that you want to evaluate for that, for that time period. And I think their, their feeling is that any system that works for your board is a good system. I think what they have a strong opinion about is it really cannot take place effectively during a regular board meeting, that you really, you do need something like a work session or a retreat. Uh, but they say, what's that?
You're excused. Said, oh, it's a committee.
No, it's not, it's not, but, so any really, as often, and I think we'll run out of time tonight, but I'll probably follow up with some questions to you all that are more of those nuts and bolts things like, how often, who should be there? They feel that superintendent only, not whether, you know, executive team or other staff or board members. They can't, you know, perhaps talk through all the issues. Should there be an outside facilitator? Should it be an individual? Could it be a committee? Those kinds of things, I, I think I'll follow up with, we're not going to have time for that tonight. I'll just follow up with some questions where it's fresh in your mind.
Josh, I would say we do have a built in, you know, self-evaluation at every meeting in that, in that board debrief. And I'm not, and I think one thing that, you know, if, if in one of these sessions, or, you know, depending on whatever works for our board, whether it's annually, I like annually because we already have a lot of other work we're doing, but that's just one, my one. But if we, however we identify like, hey, we're not, we're not living up to this item, we're not doing a good job of that. You could take that and reflect on that at the end of the meeting, you know, in your area for growth. Hey, you know, we've been talking about wanting to make sure that we're doing a better job communicating the work of the board. And, you know, tonight, as we heard about some of the things we've shared about that, I think we took a step forward on that. Or we're still not doing that, we don't like, we, we talked about the OE of communication with the community from the administration, but we're still working on our communication plan. So that, that's a chance to like, in a small way, continue to be reflective on our progress in that. It doesn't necessarily get that, but we do have that built. So far, we've been reflecting on our development, but, you know, maybe after tonight or as we go forward, some of these items can be the things that we reflect about individually, our performance as a board in that. So we do have that little, like, it's not the fullness that maybe we might need, but we do have that bit that we can keep reflecting.
Go ahead, Erica.
I think, I think I felt the same way. In fact, in my notes for prep for this meeting, I wrote like, all of us better at self-evaluation. I think, you know, in the same way that we need to be better about articulating, and I think now you have come up with a structure for articulating how we're gonna create the summaries on the monitoring reports. I think similarly, how we utilize that time at the end of our board meetings to, to be very specific about which goals or which parts of our work as a board, we, we, we want to articulate of like, oh, I think that we, you know, showed a lot of progress on this one thing that, you know, that we're working on. Or like, like Tim has said, I think that we could all be better about sort of utilizing that. I mean, I know for me personally, using, utilizing that time better of when I, you know, when we say, what is something that, you know, we need to improve on? Well, you know, that's, that's our chance to monitor it in real time. So I don't know, I felt the same way.
You know, I know for me, it's someone interesting, we're going to talk about utilizing that debriefing. Some of this formative, formative evaluation, kind of this, this idea then, that the, something that worked and something that, that didn't work then, the context should be in BSR and governance approach. That's a, that, that's potentially the context. And or, you know, something that went well, did we, did we address, you know, like, I, I, I thought we did a pretty good job with GC, GC two specifically, three, three, three C, four B or something. That, that's really, that's really what we're potentially talking about if we're, if we're wanting to. And, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure the debriefing is, 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 is that common to do, but maybe it could. But that, what that would also require, I guess, what that would also require me, I would be cheating and having towards the end there to actually on the agenda, going down for the policies and then familiarizing myself again, looking at, because, you know, I, I, because we always have a reference point, I'm not really going to memorize these and, and, and those aspects. But really, a, a lot of what we're doing would really kind of be centered around GC two and GC three. We can talk about, uh, 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 you know, what, what you think we did well or did, uh, did poorly. And then, uh, so I, I, I like the more, uh, uh, work session aspects, looking at it and, you know, three month, uh, three month increments maybe or something like that. And, you know, Lori will sit on, you know, a survey asking us, uh, I could do that. But that's kind of where, where I would be if we're, we're going to try to capture it. The, the, the thing that I struggle throughout this whole thing, you know, it is, it is really, how does it, how does this model then allow us to be both, uh, uh, proactive and reactive, uh, given, uh, given the situation in this context of a self-evaluation? So, uh, how we, how we summarize our cover sheet for the monitoring? That required, uh, 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 it was, it was reactive, but that required a immediate kind of readjustment. We're, we're addressing that now. But when the next, the, the, the next piece comes up, are we able to address that at? We're not really technically, if we're abiding in, we don't address that at a, at a board meeting. We would have to wait until our next work session. So, or, or whatever we agree upon and, and, and trying to, uh, trying to address those pieces. So, you know, I, I, the optics of what Josh talks about is, it, it makes perfectly sense. If we administratively, if we are holding them to certain timetables, our timetables of accountability should probably be aligned, uh, 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 aligned with that as well. How we, how we go about doing that though, would really, we would rethink if we're wanting to do that, like during the debrief. It's really, what are we doing and how is that aligning with how it relates to BSRs or GCs?
I'm just, I'm just noting that that is an opportunity for board self-evaluation at every, that's, that's in my, that's like our continuous self-evaluation. To my mind, that's the element that we, that we brought in. I, um, I, I guess I'm, this will all be in the survey, I'm real hesitant to add things quarterly because we've already talked about doing either like kind of quarterly or three times a year, like a policy re, potential revamp. So now we've got four, four additional meetings that the board is coming to a year. If we add another quarterly for self-evaluation, now we have eight, so now we have three meetings almost every month. And it's like, that, that becomes onerous, but, um, we could evaluate, maybe we don't need to revalue, revisit our policy for changes every three months. Maybe it's more important to do the self-evaluation piece. And, and I'm not saying that we transfer that debrief only, that's the only mechanism of self-evaluation. I'm just saying we do have an ongoing way to just check in and say, hey, you know, we've been talking about, and I think you're right, the more that we tie it to, especially it's the GCs that we're evaluating, like, how is our, what are, how are we doing our job at these meetings that we're supposed to be sort of debriefing on? I mean, sometimes it's easy to get away and bring up a point that was administrative focused or, but it's really supposed to be like, how am I? Or how are we doing our, uh, doing our jobs? And I'm, I just wanted to highlight like, we do have that in place. It is not necessarily sufficient for full monitoring, but it can be a way to do that in more like real time or more rapidly. Or to note, we got a problem here, and when we note that, we can always adjust it. We're not handcuffed to only do it at the designated times if there isn't. It was somewhat serendipitous that one, it comes up at this time of year and we had this time tonight to address it. So that was a good thing, because it now sets us up hopefully for an improved first full year of monitoring reports, where we have a better system. But if we need to adjust four months down the road, six months down the road, we can do that.
Reflection at those meetings personally for me is usually very much on the business of that day. And what's valuable, think about a conversation like this is that occasionally I think that, that, that we, the board, needs that 30,000 foot pullback to kind of think about just the larger picture of things. Are we monitoring the right things? I think we have too many. I think we could skinny some of those down, we really need assets.
Everybody's got it, but hopefully it becomes very quickly. I mean, hopefully that like, that OE is right, they have like, uh, Dawson and Quinn say, you're spending a lot of time on OE's, doing it wrong. So hopefully, once we get through it, like OE 12 will pass in future years, hopefully, I mean, we'll see what the discussion is. But hopefully it will just be, that's a 10 minute discuss, that's a 10 minute monitoring report discussion as opposed to, you know, OE two might be longer, or, and the Rs are, should be long, you know, that's. you know, O E two might be longer or, and the R's are, should be long. You know, that's our focus.
It's kind of rhetorical because I would never ask that question at the end of one of our meetings. Do we really need to be doing this? You know, I can't hear, right? You know, it, do we really have?
On the, um, on these past evaluations, and I'm thinking of Aislinn and Samuel too, anything that you saw in there that, anybody, anything that's there that we don't want to let slip by?
Like you guys are accessible, I guess, like they can actually like bring, bring something to you that they're concerned about. And, you know, from a student perspective and, and from like what I've observed with on the ground and operational staff, like you guys still feel like, I'm, I'm sure it's easier to like forget in a meeting like this, but you still feel quite like inaccessible to a, to a common person. Um, like you feel high up and, and far away. And I wish that there was a way, um, even if we couldn't have, like, obviously you can't talk to every student like the way you can talk to me or Reader Sam. But like, if, if you could have like some sort of, uh, like summary or something that you bring to the student body, like we're, we're thinking about, uh, doing this or like just, um, a summary of things that you, you talked about in a meeting. Maybe that could be part of like a representative's job, um, to just talk like, this is what the board is thinking about doing, just so you know. Um, and then that would open up a conversation for, for students, for staff, for the community, for parents. It, it would be really helpful to just like have a more accessible way of knowing like what's going on up here.
Can I speak to the communication plan for? Um, Aislinn, the communication plan that is in the works or is like circulating around board members right now, um, hopefully to, you know, come into effect, not only to do many of the things that you just mentioned, uh, put board members in more direct contact with very specific groups of people um, and, and make us way more accessible, but also to help with some of that summative communication. Um, and making sure that those messages are getting out to the community, um, in a, you know, a positive way, but you know, also in just like, uh, hey, this is what, this is what we're doing, or this is what we're talking about, or this is what, you know, is happening, you know, in the, the scary room downtown. Um, and that hopefully will, will, um, be in front of us soon to talk about more, but it is there.
Yeah, all I would really say is kind of what Aislinn said is having some form of communication with the student reps and the community while still also balancing confidentiality, because I know that's an issue where we have to kind of balance both what goes to the student reps and the public. But yeah, a little bit more communication so we can share stuff to more people would be very helpful. So yeah, I basically back up what Aislinn said.
I, I like those ideas from both of you, and I wonder if this would be good fodder for the next time that we get together as the student reps with, uh, with Lori and I, that, because I think, Aislinn, something you said about the student reps bringing it back to the students, but also with it, like that sounds like a great idea, but also that could include like you helping other students to know like, hey, if you've got a concern that the school board needs to hear about, here's how to get in touch with them. And us being ready. So, and that along with, you know, some of the elements of the communication plan, Erica, that you were talking about. So, um, let's, let's make that maybe part of, maybe the, 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 the first focus of the next time that we get together. We talked about towards the end of February and talk about how can we work with the student reps to want to evolve your role, but also improve our communication with the student level. So thank you both for bringing that forward. And, and I think we can work, do some of that work at that next, at that next meeting.
Anybody else?
I feel like you were gonna say something, Lori, and then.
Oh, I was just gonna say that. Want to pull that up? Students, you have it in an email, and Mike, you have it in an email for me, uh, at about six o'clock this evening. This is the.
Thank you, Lori, for continuing to nudge us to get that particular aspect.
Sorry. This is the, um, this is just a spreadsheet. Not, not organized in any way, that has the board members, um, kind of looking at each of those policies and communicating if individuals have felt we were in compliance or not. And actually, people wrote a bit, a bit more than I even expected. Uh, there was only a couple areas where people felt we were not compliant. And so I, I guess, um, just given the time, my feeling is perhaps for a, just a first pass at a board self-evaluation this month, that I would take what people have said here and what we could use the next twenty minutes. If, do you think there are any gaps? So I'll just basically preserve the, the comments that people wrote. And that will be, it will become the self-evaluation just for this, for this first go around. And is there anything here that, I know in one spot, I, I know one thing might be coming, this Markwell you said for the, uh, you know, you, you had put in that comment on the, the G Cs, you said you could just discuss at the meetings. You know, I mean, that open-ended box?
Oh, yeah. In, 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 in this discussion, it's kind of, uh, for, for me, as, as, as we, as we look at each one, as we look at each one of those, those, those G, G Cs, kind of where, you know, and I think I, I forget what I have on there, you know, potentially in terms of like this compliance with, this compliance with exception or like non-compliance, I, you know, it's kind of difficult, given that we're all new to this whole deal that, you know, I, 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 I'm just hard pressed to actually, you know, uh, say without, uh, 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 you know, there's probably only like three of them that, you know, I think, uh, uh, would, would make sense. The rest of them though, knowing that we're all new to this, it's really hard for me to justify saying that, uh, you know, that we're in compliance, you know, I think, is there something set up for, uh, vacancy fulfillment? There, you know, so, you know, and what, what is, what is the cost of governance? And, and, and for me, you know, when, when I, when I, when I looked at that, thinking about what was, uh, 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 what was included in those annual reviews, that one is, there's, it's not really spelled out. What's, what, what, what's the cost of actually training a school board member? And I think, you know, uh, uh, this, from a communication standpoint, I know, uh, uh, and I, I, I'm, maybe I'm the only one, uh, 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 only one on the, on, on the current school board that felt this way. I, I had an idea actually what being on the school board was, but once I was on the school board, nothing actually equated to what I, uh, I had envisioned, uh, I, at, at all, you know, I, and, 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 and those are some pieces that have to be, have to communicate, you know, I think, you know, we have a lot of people interested in running for the school board this year. I think they have an eye, they have a certain idea of what they intend to actually do if they are elected on the school board. However, once you're on the school board though, uh, 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 those, those, those expectations may not actually align with kind of the, the. And so for me is, what, what's, what's that cost? And is that cost, you know, we're talking about training for coherent governance. But I would also, there is, there, there's, there's training about what's your level of, how do you effectively communicate via, uh, via email with community? You know, do we, are there, you know, and, and one would gather that, you know, the collective group that we have serving as school board members now, given, uh, our professional, our professional work, it's kind of, you know, we, you know, we're trained as professors at the university. Some of us abide by that training more so than others, but kind of how do you effectively like communicate with young adults when they're in, and are, and are colleagues? So I, I, I guess for me, that, that the whole discussion that I had about the government, I'm just not sure. It would be hard pressed for me to, to say that we're compliant when I do not personally have a grasp really, uh, uh, on, on a lot of this, you know, and you, you, you look at the G C two and when you look at the, you know, the, 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 this commitment. There is some like, there's some specifics. I still have like a lot of, you know, like a lot, a, a lot of questions. If you, if you go back to G C two, three, three C, the board will communicate frequently and regularly with residents in the community, maintain public trust through full and open. That's, 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 that's not compliant. And so governing, our governing commitment, if that's what we have to be beholden to, you know, or unless our, our, our larger view is that our form of communication is meeting monthly, it's open to the public, which I can see how some people would interpret that as the, the communication strategy. But the context of what this has, I, you know, so that was just basically for me. That's the, that's where I'm struggling with is to, to, to even say that we are, how can you find yourself in compliance? With a model that you're still trying to gain understanding and that you are also creating as, 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 as we're doing.
I just wanted to say, like, when you bring up G C two, three C, right, the communication piece, that's why I marked us as, you know, compliant with, with exception. That was my exception. And I, I actually see, I think in your comment, Lori, you said G C three C is the, the exception as well. So, you know, I hear what you're saying on the rest of it, but when you brought that one up specifically, like that one, I, for sure, like, I think that's a point of agreement. And I suspect, Erica, that you marked it that way as well for the communication issue, at least in part.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also, yes, but I also marked the global on G C two because I really feel that that diversity and viewpoint thing, we're not doing that. And I.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
Yeah, no. So I mean, I, I think that, I think G C two and G C three, G C two is probably the most riddled with challenges, I would say. G C three, obviously, um, point three has its G C three for you is, again, you know, communication not compliant. I, I personally struggle with G C seven two or just in my probably questions to Mike about certain things that come up. I, I have perhaps like waffled in my, in my compliance there. So it was kind of interesting to look at what I think we're really good at as a board, but then also like, hey, what could I really work on as a board member? Um, so that I, I enjoyed the exercise for self-evaluation, like personally, so.
So yeah, if there's, so if there's, there's components like that where there's a areas of improvement and highlight, you know, highlighting, highlighting, highlighting those with the kids. All right, or, this is, uh, I'm just, I'm, I, it will, it will take me a while, you know, and maybe if, you know, if I'm voted off, I don't have to worry about it anymore. But if I, if I remain though, I, I, if this is the model that we're, that we're, that we're committed to, I think, uh, we, as we talk about, you know, Superintendent Johnson minimizing the compliance with exceptions. You know, I think we, we, we have to minimize our compliance with exceptions or, or non-compliance. And, you know, Erica just spoke to this idea of, of, of self-evaluation. And like I said, I hadn't looked at these in, 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 in great detail, but for me, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, you know, you know, Phil made, Phil made the joke, uh, 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 before player, uh, uh, about committee. You know, I, I'll, personal level, I, I, I'm not sure I will ever support actually like additional, like, 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 like committees or everything. So I, I just know personally, like this is, you know, and I, and still in the purity of the book though, you actually don't even have budget and development, but we, we agreed to actually kind of like.
We're gonna reevaluate though at the end of the year.
I, I probably will be actually.
I think it's in there that, that it's to be reevaluated for budget development because the, the overall goal is maybe phase it out. Although maybe it's, it has, you know, a different, I know you're bringing it to like, you know, referendum essentially development committee.
Yeah, but then, you know, the, the, the point that we talked about before is that challenge is in, without that, do we, uh, 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 get a little bit crazy with the whole liaison piece and our ad hoc with something really, but you know, and, and I, I, I don't really, you know, but once again, the purity of, of coherence government, you know, if everything's appropriately, you, you really require very little of that because all the information that's needed to for decision-making and evaluation provided to be through, uh, through the report. So I, you know, I, for, for me, I just, it, it is very difficult to, and, and maybe we can just have it, you know, in this, in this, this spreadsheet. But, you know, taking the example from, uh, from the text is, you know, where, where were we in a table for? Right? And, and let's focus in, in, you know, in the work session of, you know, progress for us is how do we, how can we as a group move from those non-compliant pieces to compliance with exception? And or how do we move, uh, as a group from compliance with the exceptions to comply? And like I said, I guess probably already sold myself out and probably, probably won't get me to move much on the committee, uh, piece or, but collectively as a group when we vote.
Did you put that we're not compliant with our committee policy?
Oh, I, I, I just, I have, I, overall, I just have like questions just about governance culture in, in general. And so for me, when I, when I was talking about like this, the question mark, we could go, you know, we, we, we are compliant basically kind of how it's, how it's laid out here, but the, the, I, if, if you envision, I guess we go back to the, there should not be any committee.
Well, but we gotta, let's, like, I think you're saying, I think there's a couple of things that I want to bring up. One, we only are beholden to be compliant to our policies. And that's what the self-evaluation is. Now, our policies may need work and our policies may not align with the purest vision of what they have. But when we do our evaluation, we should be evaluating, are we doing the things that we have written here that are the board policies? Or when we've, when, you know, we've rotated off future boards with what the policies are as they have written them slash we have adapted. So that's, that's one thing. The second thing, I think you make a good point, like we are obligated to get to full compliance as best we can. But it, and I think, I think I agree with you. It, it sounds like it needs to be both a combination of our own board development to understand the policies better, to understand what is the vision of that. Cause you said, you know, I'm not comfortable with that. Like, cause I'm not fully sure what the policy means for me or, or what compliance looks like. So we have to, you know, take that upon us. So that gets back to your question about like, we need more, we need board development. And then, yeah, working as a group to actually adhere to the things where we, you know, we, I think one of the things for me, just looking at, you know, the one place that seems consistent across like more places where people are saying compliant with exceptions in the G Cs, basically ties into every place that there's that communication piece. I think it's clear to me that like one of our board priorities for this upcoming year, or whether we come back in six months and say we need a fuller reevaluation, is to get that communication plan in place, start implementing it, and then evaluate again on that piece. So that to me is like a clear takeaway that, you know, we have it in process and it's, it's like one of those things, you know, Mike, you brought us a few things. You said, we're not there yet. Here's our date when we're gonna have it in place. We have to do the same thing. We have to say, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, we've been working on the communication plan. We need to say, we have to now bring it all the way through. Like we've got it, you know, in the hands of three board members, which is as many as we can do before we get, you know, bring it to everybody. Since it will be something that we agree to, like, we need to get it there. And then we need to have that discussion as a full board and move forward. So, um, I just, I, I really appreciate what you're saying, Markwell. And then it just highlights for me like, we, we have to continue to develop our shared understanding of what these policies mean. And then how do we advance our ability to comply with them?
Yeah. What is, what, what is, what does a shared understanding, uh, look like? Especially when the makeup or the dynamics of a school board, uh, uh, change.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be an on, it's, it's always gonna be an ongoing work and.
Are we, are we planning to summarize this like we would for a superintendent evaluation? A summary for ourselves? Because I think that would be, is that, is that what happens? Is that a thing that happens?
We don't have, I don't think, I don't think they're, I don't think any policy. We don't have, I don't think I don't think there are any policy calls for a specific product. I know, Lori, you had said your intention is, and I think it's a good um practice.
I think.
Have some sort of a summary.
I think that, you know, I'm just thinking about new school board members, and I'm thinking about how are they going to get caught up on potentially the work of the board and where our priorities might be? And obviously, reading a super reading the superintendent evaluation, right? If we are really, you know, the board's success is the superintendent's success, well, here's where the superintendent is at, right? This is all the stuff that we've got, and these are these are kind of the areas of focus, either identified by the superintendent or um identified by the board. And I think that the board self evaluation in a summative form would also be really helpful. That way, new members can see kind of what the board is is working towards. So perhaps they could contribute or um at least not obstruct any work. I mean, not unintentionally, not intentionally.
So in in EC four officer role, we added for the vice president responsible for compiling the board's annual submitted self assessment.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Lori.
So vice president responsible for professional. So if I that's my question to all of you. I I really do think of this just as a first pass and mostly because there are what you all said. There are many things we've not done yet. There are things we might not even have a shared understanding is to. If it would be okay for what we have here, that I'll put this into an evaluation document, knowing that we'll return, but I I probably include this as questions to you all for sure, once more this in the next course of the year. Maybe more than this, but we won't wait a full year to self evaluate. There will be at least one more self evaluation in there, perhaps more.
Summer retreat, maybe.
If it does it, I guess, does it sound okay to just capture what's here? Uh I'll add things that people have said orally, of course, that were not in the written.
I I answer this all wrong since you're going by your role in GC four. Then I'm supposed to identify activities and.
And I wasn't going to bring that up.
Yeah, that's a fact.
It's a team effort between.
If you can change my response in there, so I it's non compliant in GC uh. Again, then provide.
With exceptions, I feel like I'm.
Yeah, well, provide periodic differences at the board is by governance culture policy, including policy review. So, yeah, if you could just change my response, exhale spreadsheet.
I think we won't get him to be the governance officer in a future term. Uh um Erica, one thing that you brought up with is it it occurs to me that it might be helpful under GC two, three A, which is the training things that new board members are to get. Like you just brought up, maybe it would be helpful to get the board's most recent self evaluation and superintendent's most recent summary letter, just as a as a piece of evidence. So I think what Terry, what I would like you to do is note that that was something that I might like to consider as a policy change when we get to a a policy change workshop that like, should we add those two items under, you know, two, three A? And just kind of add that to that document that we have going on. That um first policy check in work session will be in the middle of the two February ones. That one is optional for board members to attend, but we are going to, at that meeting, hope to develop some sort of consensus, at least some of the people that are there, that these potential policy changes can go on to consent for the for a meeting and these can, you know, maybe need more work or some more discussion with the full board. So again, that one, between the two regular meetings in February is optional for board members. But those that are here will go through some of the things and we'll just, you know, we'll check in with kind of as much as we we have. Thank you. Sorry to run away with that. I had that idea that I wanted to make sure we got captured, at least for a little bit more consideration of policy discussion.
So would it be okay to?
I would hear a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Lori, for your facilitation tonight.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.